Now, we do have a handheld mic. And I would ask that you raise your hand and wait for the mic because it's easier for people to hear. Even if you do have a booming voice, the mic does help everyone else to hear what's going on. If there are no objections from the body, I would ask your permission or if there are any objections, any non-residents speaking before the body this morning. Are there any objections? Very good. Thank you. Article two, to see if the voters will appropriate the following sums of money. A: $500 to the American Legion Post 42. B: $1,000 to Enesberg Town Band. C: $1,000 to the Enesberg Conservation Committee. D: $2,500 to the Enesberg Food Shelf. And E: $1,000 to the Enesberg Historical Society. Now, would you prefer to vote on these individually or as a block? Yes. It's been moved to vote on all of these appropriations in a block. Is there a second? Could you please state your name when you raise your hand for the clerk? In that way, so it was moved. Claude Rose. Thank you very much. So it's been moved and seconded to vote on these appropriations in a block. Any further discussion on the motion? So we're just voting to vote on them as a block. This is not to vote on Article two. All those in favor of voting on the appropriations in one block, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. So now, we will... Is there any discussion on any one of the articles prior to the vote? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting Article two as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. You have accepted Article two. Article three, to see if the voters will appropriate the following sums of money. A: $1,500 to Champlain Valley Agency on Aging. B: $1,000 to Care Partners Adult Day Center. C: $1,000 to Franklin County Court Diversion and Community Justice Programs. E, oh actually D, $1,000 to Vermont Association for the Blind and Visually Impaired. E: $5,840 to Franklin County Home Health Agency. F: $1,000 to the Northwest Unit for Special Investigations. G: $2,800 to Northwestern Counseling and Support Services. H: $1,000 to Franklin County Industrial Development Corporation. I: $500 to the Cisco River Basin Association. J: $2,248 to Vermont to Green Mountain Transit. K: $100 to Vermont Rural Fire Protection Task Force. L: $270 to Vermont Center for Independent Living. M: $1,000 to Voices Against Violence, which is Lori's house. N: $150 to Green Up Vermont. And O: $500 to Vermont Family Network. And all of these are, letters are in your handbook and each one specifically asking for a sum of money. Hopefully you have read on through to find out what these organizations are working So on Article three, would you prefer to vote on these individually or would you prefer to vote on them in a block?
Motion to vote in a block.
It's been moved to vote on Article three as a block.
I'll second it.
Could you state your name, please?
Pat Goodrich.
Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded to vote on Article three as a block. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of voting on Article three as a block, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. So you have voted to vote, or actually to vote on Article three as a block. Are there any questions on any of the appropriations at this time? Yes, sir. Please state your name. And we will get the mic forthwith.
Ms. Dan Cunningham. First, I've got a few comments. I did a little bit of research and I'd first like to say that I don't mean to denigrate any of the organizations that are listed in Article three. I think they're all great. They do good work. Vermont has nearly 6,000 nonprofit and tax-exempt organizations, but I have a couple of comments. In Article two, the Enesberg Food Shelf reports in the town report that they help approximately 900 families per month and were giving them $2,500. On Article three, the Vermont Association for the Blind and Visually Impaired have requested $1,000 and in their report, they mentioned they serve four adults in Enesberg. So if we applied the same math that we do to the Vermont Association for the Blind, if we applied that to the Enesberg Food Shelf, we actually should be giving the Food Shelf close to a quarter of a million dollars. Or conversely, we should be giving the Association for the Blind $11 based on how many people they assist. I also took the time, every tax-exempt organization is required to file an IRS report. It's called a Form 990 and it lists how much income they make and where it comes from and what the compensation is for the board of directors. So I did that with both the Association for the Blind and Visually Impaired and also for the Northwest Counseling and Support Services. And I can state that neither one are in trouble. Actually, the Vermont Association of the Blind, they have a $5 million fund that consists of publicly traded securities and their annual budget is about eight to nine million dollars, so they're in fine shape. For Northwest Counseling and Support Services, I mentioned there's approximately 6,000 nonprofits in the state and they rank in the top 20 as far as income and resources. Their total revenue and the latest report I had from the IRS is $38 million a year. All of their expenses are completely covered by grants and revenue. They receive $32 million from patient fees, 1.6 million from school contracts, and 2.7 million from federal and state grants. The one biggest issue I have with the amount we want to give to that particular organization is the compensation for the directors and key employees. So I'll start with just some of the salaries. $183,000, $201,000, $205,000, $208,000. For eight employees at this organization, they pay over 1.1 million dollars, which seems a little excessive to me. I think they'll manage just fine if we give them half of what they've requested. So I'm assuming I can make the motion to amend Article three.
You can make, actually you can make a motion or you can make an amendment on any one of these articles.
Okay. So on Article three, I move to amend line D, it's in Delta, by striking $1,000 and inserting $400. And to amend line G, as in Gulf, by striking $2,800 and inserting $1,400. And the reason for this is we spend a lot of time, there's not a person in this room who hasn't heard about spending locally, buying locally, supporting local businesses. We hear it on the television, we hear it amongst our neighbors. And when we take a look at Article two, it totals about $6,000, but we're sending three times that much to organizations that some of them aren't even located in Franklin County. So I just think that's a disjoint there someplace. So thank you.
So could you reiterate?
Yes, I move to amend Article three, line D, as in Delta, by striking $1,000 and inserting And to amend line G, as in Gulf, by striking $2,800 and inserting $1,400.
So you're asking to increase...
Decrease both.
Decrease.
Right. Line D goes from 1,000 minus 600 and ends up at 400.
Oh, 400, okay.
Line G starts at 28, we cut it in half to 1,400. Thank you.
Thank you. So there is a motion on the floor to amend line D from $1,000 to $400 and line G, Northwest Counseling and Support Services, from 2,800 and knocking that to 50%, which would be $1,400. So there's a, there's a motion on the floor to amend those two lines. Is there a second? Mary Ann Mercy, seconded motion. Further discussion on the, on the motion to amend?
I was wondering if the money that the Northwest Counseling is asking for is to pay for people who can't afford to have counseling other than to have that money?
From what I saw in their 990 form and on their website, $32 million is reimbursed by the patients insurance and they do accept Medicaid. So I would imagine most of the people that don't have any other type of insurance would be covered by Medicaid. And also on, on their 990 form, it lists, it breaks out into three different groups, the adults they serve, the children they serve, and some other group. And it talks about the Northwestern Counseling expenses for each particular group. And then it also mentions how much they got in grants and contributions. And in each case, the grants and contributions more than covered the expenses for those groups. I hope that comes close. It doesn't specifically say that there are people that they don't serve, but I believe part of the federal law is that we may get grants and this organization gets grants from both the federal government and the state government, just like the hospital that are required to write off so much as a public, public service debt that they can't cover. So I'm assuming they would be similar to that.
You'll find out on page 64. There's another, another question.
Hi, Amy Henneville. I just noticed that in their letter, they're actually asking for $3,800. I don't know if that's a change that was already made or...
Select words.
That's what the board decided to bring it down. Two of us told me that they were asking for 38.
Hi, my name is Steve Bull. I have a few comments and observations. One is, once again, we are deciding how much money we can afford to give away before we know how much we have to pass the budget. This was observed last year. My recollection is last year, we did our donations and then we didn't. Also ended up with inadequate funding of our fire department. So in general, I still hope that someday we can move to figuring out, as most households do, how to pay our bills and then how much is left over and where to allocate those funds. I'm also observing that we're now discussing Northwest Counseling and Support Services, but the same discussion could happen for a number of agencies that have asked for funds. I just noticed in the letters, for example, that Northwest Counseling and Support Services actually helps more than twice as many people in the county per year as Franklin County Home Health in terms of the number of clients. I also observed that this year, once again, we are proposing to fully fund the requests from Franklin County Home Health Agency. Both these agencies get the bulk of their money through insurance reimbursement and grants. I don't think it's fair to target Northwest Counseling and Support Services, who we are already cutting. The proposal, the initial proposal from the board was to fund them with less than what they asked for. And we're going to cut that one in half and we're still going to fully, as we do every year, rubber stamp and accept what this other agency... They both are providing critical services, healthcare services, for people in our town and our county. It's also worth noting, I think, that Counseling and Support Services are really critical as our towns, our county, and our state deal with the growing crisis in addiction. So I just hope we can be mindful of these things as we move forward. Thank you.
Any further questions? I agree with that. And I wonder whether we can handle a B for boy and G for golf separately? Can we handle vote on B for boy and G for golf separately? D for... Well, the amendment was for, for, actually amending each article together. So that is, that is what, what the amendment was. And that's what we'll vote on first. Now, you can amend the amendment. That is a possibility. So as the amendment reads right now, you are striking $600 from D and $1,400 from G. So that's where the amendment stands at this point. Any further discussion on this amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor of amending line D to $400 and line G to $1,400, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. There appears to be a division of the House and the chair cannot decide which, which is higher in numbers. So I would ask for a division of the House. 37-4. Now, could you please be seated? 24. So the amendment has been accepted. Any further discussion on Article three?
Ava's generous. May I ask, so let me know if this particular one that you reduced, this moderator told us, did you reduce any of these other amounts?
Yes.
And could you tell us which ones?
Okay. So Champlain Agent was asking for 2,500. That was A. Franklin Home Health is asking for 58, 40. Northwest Counseling was asking for 38. Green Mountain Transit was asking for 22, 38. Voices Against Violence was asking for 1,500. I believe it's that.
Ms. Dan.
Larry, is Vermont Rural Fire Protection, is that a new one? Did we have that last year?
Yeah, we had it last year. Rural Task Force.
May I ask, what does that involve? Anyone know?
The dry hydrants?
Another question. Can you please summarize what's happening? I will, in just a second.
I was going to make a motion, so why don't you talk first? I was going to make a motion about one of these line items, an amendment.
You can, you can amend.
Okay, we have just decided to fund Northwest Counseling and Support Services at 37% of what they asked for. Also, the first item, A, $1,500 for CVAA, which actually doesn't exist anymore, it's called H-Well. We're proposing to fund them at 60% of what they are asking for. Northwest Counseling and Support Services and Franklin County Home Health Agency are quite similar in their funding sources and their reimbursement. They're both healthcare organizations, they largely are reimbursed through health insurance and grants. They both have highly paid, top staff. So I would propose that we amend item E, Franklin County Home Health Agency, conservatively to 60% of what they're requesting, which is the same as what we are proposing for CVAA and almost twice the funding level of what we just agreed on for Northwest Counseling and Support Services. Thank you.
So there is a motion to amend letter E from $5,840 to $2,000. 50%?
60%.
60%? Do you have the number? There is a motion to amend Article E to 60%, which will be $3,504. Is there a second to that motion?
35 and 4, no. 3504, no cents.
Oh, okay. So it's moved and seconded to amend letter E for Franklin County Home Health Agency. Any further discussion on the amendment?
I'm Denise Hawsworth, a former staff member, a board member, a director of the Franklin County Home Health Agency for 12 years. Now, it's true, I am retired and I'm aging, as is a lot of our population here in Franklin County. I wonder how many people in this room have been touched by the services of the Home Health Agency or have had their neighbors touched by that or their grandparents or their children. And my concern is, as you cut the program, you are not acknowledging the fact that the healthcare system is in some turmoil. While it's true that Medicare and Medicaid are reimbursement sources for Franklin County Home Health, they do not pay the total cost of services. And there are very few grants that underwrite patient care for home health. There are people who have very high deductibles that they can't meet in the insurance for their insurance. There are people who carry no insurance at all. And I would ask you to defeat this amendment because of what is happening in our population and because the need for home health care services is only going to increase.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Yes, Steve?
I will simply observe that according to the... I'm sorry. According to the letter from Franklin County Home Health Agency, they served 1,924 residents in the county. According to the letter, Northwest Counseling and Support According to the letter from Northwest Counseling and Support Services, they served four thousand one hundred and seventy-four residents in the county. Mental health has stigma, so you are far more likely to know about your neighbors that are getting services from home health than you are about your neighbors getting services from Northwest Counseling and Support Services. Yet, according to the figures that we have in this book, twice as many people in the county are getting services from Northwest Counseling and Support Services. Both organizations have very similar profiles in how they are reimbursed. Thank you.
We have another. Please wait for the microphone.
My name is Felicia Lefler. You quickly listed the numbers that are different, but they list all served in the county between Northwestern Counseling Services and Franklin County Home Health. I would just like to note that on page fifty-nine of the letter, that Franklin County Home Health says that the support in fifty-eight hundred and forty dollars goes to Enesberg Falls for those that lack resources. So while there may be the same reimbursement platforms and systems in place for both agencies, one is specifically asking for money to help our residents, and one is asking for money to serve Franklin County. That's all.
Further discussion on the amendment? Article Three.
Hi, Lou Rose. I just point out, Steve, that also in that letter, it says that eighty-one percent of the funds that come to Franklin County Home Health are from Medicare and Medicaid. So they are not getting fully funded by Medicare and Medicaid. Thank you, Denny, for your comments, I couldn't agree more, as a former board member.
Jared Willie. It seems like, well, at least I'm confused, I don't know if anybody else is, but it seems like there is an amendment for Age Well, and we are discussing Franklin County Home Health. So I just want to make that distinction, or are we not?
I propose, I propose we fund Franklin County Home Health at sixty percent of what they ask for because we are funding Age Well at sixty percent.
Okay, so you're not suggesting that we...
No, there's no correlation. No correlation, other than the percentage that he was stating. Any further discussion on the amendment? One more.
About, oh gosh, home health actually comes down to people's homes? Does the mental health people do that? I have a friend who called up the mental health people, they have a twenty-four hour crisis line, nobody answered the phone, so I don't know.
Further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all is in favor of amending Article E to the sum of sixty percent of fifty-eight hundred and forty, which is three thousand five hundred and four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
The noes appear to have it. The noes do have it, you have defeated the amendment of Letter E in Article Three. Any further discussion on Article Three? Any further discussion? Hearing none, as many as would accept Article Three as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
You have accepted Article Three. Article Four, shall a town vote to give the Select Board general authority to enter into tax stabilization contracts with owners, leases, baileys, or operators of commercial or industrial property pursuant to twenty-four VSA twenty-seven forty-one B one. I would entertain a motion. Which one? State your name.
Sandra Furlong.
Okay, is there a second? And second, thank you very much. Before we enter into discussion, I would like Polly Rico to speak about Article Four.
So we had an information meeting last night to basically go over the points of what tax stabilization is, so I thought we would just take a moment to kind of address that before you have any questions, or if you have any questions. So what tax stabilization is, that basically gives the governing authority, in this case the Select Board, oh, the letter is found on page seven that I wrote about it? So, basically what tax stabilization is, gives the governing authority, being the Select Board, the authority to freeze a municipal tax assessment on a property for an extended period of time, and that could be any, it can't be longer than ten years, it could be three years, it could be five years, but it can't be longer than ten years. And so what this article will do, will allow, let's say if any development wants to occur in Enesberg, it would give us the authority to kind of freeze that tax assessment while the developer is putting their funds into the project, and then only will, at the end of the contract that is created, at that point, the taxes will increase to the new value. Now, there are some towns that structure the contracts where there may be educational tax, or some other taxes that are on the property, some towns pass that on to their voters to pick up the tab for the contract duration, but you can also structure the contracts to say that any additional taxes, that being school tax, or any other state taxes that are incurred, you can pass that on to the developer. So that is basically up to the Select Board to decide whether we would want the taxpayers to take that, or whether we would want the developer to take that. And we, I can say that we've talked at length about this, we've done lots of research, and we, the board sitting in front of you, are committed to not passing those on to the taxpayer, that we would merely make contracts that would freeze the tax assessment for a duration of period, the developer would pick up any increase in taxes, so for instance, let's just say that your tax rate increases at three percent, not that it would, but let's just say it does, that we can increase that three percent on that frozen tax value. So even though taxes are increasing, it can still increase for the developer, but we're basically saying that your municipal assessment will stay at this rate, or not this rate, this value for a period of time. Does that make sense? Yeah, so now, questions up there?
Questions?
Avis Chairtis, and how is the board going to decide the number of years? If you're not saying this is for a ten-year period, until all wants five-year period, how are you going to decide that? Is that fair?
It's gonna depend on the scope of the business coming in. This is new to us, and basically I think we're looking at mainly three to five years, and they need to have a plan based, come in front of us, and we have to assess it, if it's gonna help the town in the future, if something really large is coming in, we may look at the ten-year thing, but this is gonna be a case by case.
Any other comments? Yes?
I am Shawna Lovlett, and I'm president of the Business Association currently, and I just want people to know that as we're working hard with other groups in the town and village to promote new business and economic development, I think this is a really important tool for the Select Board to have, to promote that, so I would just ask for everybody's support in this article.
So, so as you may have, you know that I've done some time on the planning commission, and I have to say that every time we would put out a survey to find out, you know, what it is that Enesberg wants as far as the vision, it always comes back to there needs to be more development in Enesberg, and we feel that this is a good compromise in order to kind of address the needs or the wants of the people who are telling us this. I mean, as the letter says, over the years, we've heard people saying, why isn't there more development in Enesberg? And we feel that this might be a great compromise in order to bring that in, but yet not renew with additional taxes. Now granted, the property value is frozen for a period of time, but the philosophy behind it is that the end of the contract, that would significantly double the tax base, or not double, but significantly add to the tax base, and so that's kind of our thinking behind it, is that, you know, from that planning point of view.
My name is Sandra Furlong, and I also am a member of the Business Association. If we look at some of our neighbors, if we look at St. Albans, we can see what St. Albans did look like, what, six, seven years ago, we can see what St. Albans is beginning to look like today, and this is an issue that they deal with. If we look to Swanton, who sort of has been stagnating. It's stagnated. Swanton is now in the process of tax stabilization as well. I think that it is an incredible boon to any business that we might already have that would like to expand. We have an industrial park with a lot of space left in it, it would help something large coming into the industrial park commercially, and I urge you to go a yes.
Did you change the battery?
Check. I went to the information meeting last night, and you talked about a limited authority, so maybe you could talk, as far as Avis is concerned, about different options that we might have that would make people feel more comfortable.
So the state has two statutes. One is that you can opt to the limited authority, which would require us to come before you every single time a contract is requested. You can see we're asking for general authority, which basically means that our contracts come before us, we can make that determination without having to come before the voters every single time. And, I mean, part of the reason why we chose general authority is because, let's say if somebody comes in in April and wants to invest significantly in Enesberg, we would have to wait till the next town meeting in order to have that conversation. So this would basically just provide a flexibility to even have the conversations and looking at the big picture, so that's why we're asking for general authority. Thank you.
Hi, I think the term stabilization is a little bit disingenuous, because what this is really is a tax break, and since we, as a town, need a certain amount of money to run our services. Is it working or not?
No.
Hello? 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 We have a pool of money that runs the town. Anytime we give tax rate to some people in the town, that means the rest of the people in the town are picking up a little extra to do that. So what this is really saying is that we, as a town, want to help subsidize a new business coming into town. It isn't stabilization, it's a tax break. I would also be more inclined to favor it if we were doing it piece by piece. Piece by piece, rather than giving general authority to the board to make the decision on who gets it, and which industry they want, and which industry they don't want. I'm not sure that we, as a town, should be ceding our authority as a white check to the board for this. Thank you.
Suzanne Holperin. I've been using this phrase a lot lately, but if we continue to do the same thing, we're gonna get the same result. The result right now is a lot of empty storefronts, undeveloped land in the industrial park, complaints from our business community that we're not business friendly, and, you know, having to burden the taxes as the grant list is right now. We need to do something, we're not asking for taxpayers to expend more money in their tax rate, it is stabilizing the tax for that new business, you're right, it's not a stabilization overall. And I think it's very progressive of you guys to think of this, I trust in your decisions, I expect the case by case basis has to do with how much money is gonna be coming into the community, how long is the project, how extensive is the project, obviously a smaller project would be a lesser timeline than a bigger one, we need to do something. And Shawna's spoken from the EBA, and as you might have seen, we just got a grant for the town for fifty-four thousand dollars with a match from the Select Board and from the village to a grand total of sixty thousand dollars. It's gonna look at Enesberg, it's gonna look at our Main Street, it's gonna look at our recreational assets, our business assets, it's gonna propose a plan where everybody gets to chime in, it's gonna be quite a project, a lot of activities, getting people to chime in on what you want Enesberg to look like, and I'm sure it doesn't envision that we want it to look like four or five empty storefronts on Main Street, and then more empty storefronts in the marketplace. Really feel if you don't want Enesberg to stagnate and slowly die, you need to be approving measures like this, particularly one that's not gonna cause your tax rate right now, you're not gonna feel us going out and asking you for more money. We want people to invest hundreds of thousands of dollars in a business, and we're saying that we're gonna, we're gonna freeze your assessment, and then when you create this beautiful vision, then we're gonna tax you at the full amount, if they wanna do it, we ought to help them out.
I'd like to speak in favor of this. I have good faith in the members of the board, and also Mr. Harrog and Mr. Wright, who are not here, that they'll do a very good job with this. This is really not the tax break, it is a stabilization, it's simply saying to anyone who will come here, you're going to see straight line what your taxes will be here, and there will be nothing unexpected down the road in your tax rate. Is this not so? This is not forgiving the taxes when somebody decides to open a store or build here? Am I right?
The assessment will stay the same.
It's just showing the developer into the next few years what's going, what's going to be their expenses in the way of taxes are gonna be.
The tax rate will always change, they fluctuate over time.
But the assessment, okay.
So if the tax rate goes up, their tax bills will go up, they're not trying to get out of paying any taxes. Just the assessment will stay the same, and if the school rate goes up, or bar rates go up, or the village rates go up, they will pay the increase.
So what I'm driving at is that we should not call it a tax break, it's just simply creating a sense of what's down the road for anyone who comes and develops here. Now, under the state law, is it proper for you to seek developers? Is it proper for the board to do that?
I, that's, I'd be new on us, we, I know we have an Enesberg Development Committee there, I'm sure, they probably... sure. They probably would be the ones that would probably bring it forth to the Select Board. Also, I'd like to keep in mind, if we had something in place years ago like this, maybe we'd have Liberty Yogurt up here, which we, you know, looking for new jobs, new money into the town, the value of all these buildings, we're going to end up decreasing people's rates over time because the added value will go up in these buildings.
Please correct me if I'm wrong. What this would mean would be if Liberty Yogurt came and decided to put a factory on a hayfield in our industrial park, they would be taxed at the rate of that blind hayfield during the stabilization process, because their assessment would be at the initial cost. And then there'll be a number of years they had a factory and they're still being... So please help me understand this better.
We would structure the contract accordingly. There's nothing, you do something in three years, it'll probably go up.
But during the stabilization period, the assessed value of that property is not going to change.
So, but you're not necessarily losing money. It's, for instance, this tax base, like right now in this general fund, that hayfield, somebody's paying taxes at that. That's what our general fund is made up of. And so that wouldn't change for, let's say, three years. So it's not like that you are losing money, but at the end of that three years, that assessment will go up to the $2 million.
But there could be two years that they have a $2 million factory on there, and they're being assessed at a hayfield. That's a tax break.
They're being assessed at their property value, yes.
Thank you.
This is just a thought. So for two years, if they don't come and build a $2 million factory, we're still paying taxes on a hayfield, where maybe they're bringing in a $2 million factory with more jobs, more income to our other supporting businesses of that factory. That's just a thought.
Felicia Lozner. I would also caution, looking at coming in with that, and how long it actually takes to establish a business. A three-year tax stabilization might account for a two-and-a-half-year development. They're six months into operation, and then they start paying taxes. They may be putting in quite a lot of money into that hayfield, but they may not be operational for two-thirds of their contract. You're giving them the opportunity to invest money without immediately looking at increasing their taxes until they have the ability to operate this business and contribute.
Thanks. Dean.
Hi, Dean Wright. I think we need to be supporting this, because one of the big things we need in our community is jobs in industry and stuff, and this is one way to urge people to be coming in. And yes, basically, you're not reappraising these properties for the set amount of time, but if you can bring jobs in, you're going to get benefits from that. We need to be... I don't know. Our communities are not promoting younger people coming in with jobs, and we need to be doing all we can for that. So I feel this is one way to help with that.
Right here, Daniel.
Joanne Carr. I was just thinking that perhaps if you called it an incentive for to bring new business into the community, instead of immediately saying a tax break for someone, it would go over better, because that's really what it is.
Further discussion on Article Four? Any further discussion? Because this article needs a two-third majority to pass, and rather than have a voice vote or a division of the House where it's harder to make, to get a proper count, I would ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like a paper ballot. We need our seven individuals. Okay. We will have a paper ballot. So at this time, no further discussion. Marky, yes, you are voting for Article Four. No, you are voting against Article Four. There are some pieces of paper. If anybody doesn't have any, I'll put the back table.
Where are you going to drop the votes off? Right? Down front, apparently. I got another one. You want me to? Narmer need one?
I got many more papers here.
She lost him.
Thank you.
Right?
You have to give your name.
Oh, okay.
You have to give your name.
Not necessarily go your own. You go Richland. There's two lots besides the club Richland. Everybody's rowed. Isn't it rowed?
I'm going to go stand over there.
I think that's where the end of the...
I know what you're saying.
Right now, right now, it's rolling way too far away from the house to use the truck. Because Enesberg is a problem with the land, and I can lift the breakers.
Right. Thank you.
Lift the breakers and grab whatever.
And right now, it's all here.
So we're going to get somebody to come over and...
Wait, okay, where's the... Okay, so we're driving in. Okay, so this is...
So this is a name. This is a name. I don't know the name there, but it is a... Actually, I think this road...
That bridge over right there. It's right to the lights, isn't it?
No, this one goes right here, and the other one goes here.
Yes. Right, so...
This goes to the...
Okay, but you have to go down through our...
Yeah.
Right, I know where it is, but they took that trailer out and there they put the trailer.
I think the village should be...
Exactly. You got it. That's what I'm saying.
I think they should, and I think they should be growing here.
Exactly. Yeah, and then something where you do your own, right?
Sure, do your own.
But right now, you know, please get help.
Maybe because the village, remember, took it over.
But the village was down there.
Right. Their sewer, their sewer.
Maybe I can help you out there.
That's why I'm sitting down here.
So this leads to...
Show off the lead.
Bill Boyle, Bill in the box here. And your other two don't go in here, it's Rob and Bill.
Yes, that's what I heard.
It's a village.
She recruited him? Well, he's only writing.
Billy Spears.
I would get that.
No, why wouldn't it? When that button that big comes to... I'll take like a rope.
Sandwich with meal there. No? You never know.
Do I fold it? No.
How you doing, boy?
Good. Great, good today? Oh, yeah. Okay, this is my first trip. I figured, these are all blessings, I don't know. Obviously, Friday is going to be a nice day. I was enjoying that new roadie for you.
And they all go the same way.
I haven't been left in a long time.
I haven't been left since a long time.
Oh, nobody's asked me to speak, so probably not. Don't want to buy an additional travel or something. No. Oh, Donna Oudra's sitting here somewhere, but that's her stuff. At least you got somewhere to get.
Better take your coat off, it's getting hot in here. We... we could push over once, sit with us. No, we've already moved. Okay, you're here. This is Marie right here.
If you just wanna stand up a minute or...
Take him away, I don't need another one.
How are you?
Is everyone voting or we just go?
Right here is the box. Thank you. No need to fold it, just the box and the box. How are you, Roger?
Why do you see that?
You got some... You're doing good?
She's being... basically...
Oh, sure. Thanks, yes.
You're busy. He was a teacher. Yeah, yeah.
You'll have to fold it. Thank you. How's the wife? I need to fold it, just the box and the box.
You can see this on camera, but it's... Can you touch that? You don't have conca... you don't... conca don't go your way, does it? Will you get some disconnect fees or some stupid thing? Wouldn't surprise me. Oh. Yeah, yeah, wasn't there because she only called Eunisburg. She still had her number of years? So, how's her... Through phone line? I'll break that, then I'll go off. She has a phone in here.
Well, yeah. But I think...
You think she's gonna what? She's gonna be moving? Where's she moving? Oh, they're gonna be selling that. You don't want them, but... Unless you wanna move over there, then you probably don't. I know it's... I know it's not about... You gotta... So, you got much...
Here, here, please, before... From the center, man. Listen to the result of your votes. Uh, there were eighty-eight votes cast. Of those eighty-eight, eighty-four were yes, four were no. So, you have resoundingly accepted our... Article five is on the Australian ballot, so we will not... Enter in the bag. Article six. Will the legal voters vote an amount on the grand list to cover the 2018 town budget? Motion is in order. Brian Jackson moved to accept. Is there a second? Seven by Tim Stetson. Discussion. Questions on article six?
You already got one?
Nope. That's Strider. Is it S.T.?
A T.R.O.U.T.
Any questions?
Yep. Yep. Where are put these here?
Yes, sir.
You'll have to fold them, just above. And they say goes here.
Lou Rose, this is just a technical thing, I don't... doesn't really matter much, but on page eight...
Are we going here?
Say the opposed amount to be raised by taxes of almost seven hundred thousand. Approximate rate is point three three four, and then down in the neck, in the highway budget, it's almost six hundred thousand, and the rate's point five two one. I'm just working with math. One's a bigger number, but you get a smaller rate.
That's through the general fund, so you're taking the whole population. The first... first one. Second one was town highway people, so it's just a town, so it's like half.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Any further questions pertaining to article six? Any further questions? Hearing none as many as would accept article six as written, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Article six has been accepted. Article seven. To transact any other non-buying business, thought proper when met. Dan, right here.
Amanda Cronin. Um, I was just wondering if we could somehow decide whether, in the future, a town meeting could be held in the evening. I don't know how that happens, but just kinda put that out there. And not use vacation day. I'm pretty sure you'd have to do a petition, but I can look into that for you and get back to you.
Any other con... yes, Dan?
Did you mean though, did you want it the night before the actual day, or that night of? Right now, we have to be open for other people. If you want to have a...
Either way.
Have an information...
Can't hear.
Going back to it, I think the question was to have it the night before town meeting day or the night of town meeting? Or regular town meeting day. You're looking to get more participation.
So, whichever would be more appropriate?
Yeah, I know other towns like Berkshire had theirs last night, you know, the... The Australian ballot stuff. I know a few years ago it was brought up until, I believe, I had to do a petition. Maybe in January and...
I... I wanted to talk about something else, but just to speak real quickly to Amanda's point. Um, and I know one town is doing it in... Little People on BPR, they're doing it on a Saturday. And... and just to confuse it, I don't believe she's talking about going Australian badge, she's talking about actually having your voting... Um, I just wanted to expand a little bit more on, um, Ennisburg initiative work that's being done. We've, uh, been meeting for a year now. And, um, the grant that I was referring to earlier is a culmination of a lot of pieces coming together in a positive way. And I think, you know, the passing of this tool for your toolbox in promoting, um, some business development in town is really good. Um, it doesn't end there, we keep... we keep moving forward. One of the things that we're talking about as a group, and it's open to anyone, we meet every other Thursday. Uh, we just met last Thursday, so it'll be two weeks from last Thursday. Again, at the emergency services building, five thirty to seven. Um, if you wanna be added to a mailing list, you can email sandyferland@rsferlands@gmail.com to get, um, to stay updated on our minutes and when our meetings are. We've had great collaboration with state agencies, um, neighboring communities. People who've been going through this process in St. Albans and Swanton have been chiming in. Um, people from all corners of Ennisburg have been coming consistently to these meetings. It's been really, really positive. I know there was a lot of skepticism early on, we were a bunch of dreamers, nothing was gonna happen. Well, things are happening, and, uh, they've reawakened the Ennisburg Economic Development Board, which runs the industrial park. So, those... those things are coming back to livelihood. And just wanna talk about, um, you know, in the future, as this plan gets, um, put together by everyone's input here, it includes visage, it includes marketing, it includes, um, some real good, uh, proposals that are gonna be the culmination of this gathering of information that you can actually look at and really get your head around. One of the things that we decided to do, because we didn't know how the grant was gonna turn out, was we started talking about, what can we do to promote Ennisburg? And one of the things that we've been looking at is a welcome center in town, you might have seen some coverage around that. So, that conversation is ongoing, and that's... that's a project that we think, um, has good energy behind it. It will help, um, catapult the bigger... the bigger feeling of Main Street Ennisburg, because you'll actually see something tangible happen. Um, we appreciate that type of support, but in the future, at some point, not everything can be accomplished with grants and, uh, you know, private donations. At some point in the future, we will again be asking our taxpayers and voters to say, do we support development in Ennisburg? And in doing so, it might mean some money. And we hope that as you see these improvements happening in town and you're liking what you see, at some point, as a taxpayer, you will be willing to possibly invest a little. Am I saying that we have a project in mind or we have money in mind? We don't. I'm thinking it's just a change in thinking. When you're developing budgets, because it's not always about keeping everybody steady to improve, at some point, it might mean, um, some expense. And I would like you, as a board, and as our taxpayers, to keep an open mind around that. If it means bringing in more development, increasing our grand list, um, which in turn helps our taxpayers. And I think we need to be thinking further down the road, the big picture, not just the right here and now, so...
Thanks, Cindy.
Hi, Cindy Ween. I really appreciate all the reports. And I noticed a few organizations, like the Opera House, Recreation Board, maybe the Food Shelf. Uh, they don't list who their members are or who's writing the letter. I think it would be great to know who's involved, if we wanna talk to them or get involved ourselves. Cindy, I can, um, at least clarify for you that Ennisburg Community Recreation Board. Um, we currently will be interviewing for a part-time recreation director. But our board is made up of myself, as a member of the EBA, Polly Rico representing the select board, Steve Wadsworth, as appointed by the trustees, Michael Horgan, as appointed by the school board, Jennifer Barnes is a community member at large. I think that's all of us this morning. Who's saying? For the Ennisburg Food Shelf, uh, the board members are Mark Shuren, Catherine Gaston, myself, Suzanne Hooparren, Steve Wadsworth, and Kerry Budson. For the Opera House, Diddy Hawsworth is here, myself, currently James Willette, Tristan Bryce, Mary Hartman, Jean McDermott. Um, who am I forgetting?
Tammy Forton.
Tammy Forton. Matt Stebbins. I might be forgetting someone else, but we're having our annual meeting tomorrow, or Wednesday night at the Opera House. That's a public, uh, meeting, anybody can attend, and we will be, um, welcoming in some new members as other members resign. Diddy, is it six or six-thirty for the public meeting?
Six o'clock for the annual meeting, six-thirty for the regular...
Six o'clock is the annual meeting, then we'll enter in our regular meeting at six-thirty.
Thank you for that information. Thank you for that information. Any further comments?
There's a free lunch in the gym. For everybody, so come, come have some soup.
Is there a representative of the ambulance service here? Yes, there is. Okay, can I talk to you later? Sure. Any further questions, comments?
I just want to hear. Right now, our assistant town clerk is taken ill. And just wanted you to be aware, Billy Joel's hours are changed.
They can look on the website, there will be a notice.
Did anyone hear that?
There, there's new hours for town clerk's office. Our assistant is taken ill. So BJ's by herself quite often, so she's changed the hours. And they're on the website, posted times.
At this time, I would invite Representative Town Representative Cindy Ween to speak of matters going on in Mount Hillier. Thank you, Cindy.
Hello, I'm Cindy Ween. For those of you who don't know me, I am the state representative, House of Representatives, and I serve on the Government Operations Committee in the House. And we're charged with doing legislation around town municipal government. So I affect what goes on in our local government. The House is really active, and we're gonna be, you know, passing a lot of legislation when we get back from vacation. We're working on reformulating the education funding system to help alleviate, excuse me, property taxes. But they'll probably, it'll be replaced with an education tax at income tax time. So hopefully, it will help people out. If not, I don't think I'll support it. If it doesn't, I guess it's gonna hurt more than it helps. We're also looking at safety legislation with all of the trauma going around in schools. Some things are coming out of the Senate heading our way. So I'm really excited about what we're doing. I think we're gonna have a positive legislative session. And there is a legislative breakfast on St. Patrick's Day at the Legion at nine o'clock. Everybody's invited to come and speak to the entire Franklin County delegation. And I will also be around at lunch if anybody wants to talk to me. Or you can certainly call me or email me. I have lots more time to speak to, you know, voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. So at this time, we will take a five-minute recess before we enter into the Road District portion of the meeting. And Road District is only, the voting members who are only in the town portion are able to vote on the Road District. So at this time, we'll take a five-minute recess. And so that puts us back here at about twenty twelve. At this time, we will call the Road District portion of the meeting order. Well, that seemed to have dropped our numbers considerably. Article one. Will the legal voters of the Town Road District authorize the select board to vote an amount on the grand list to cover the 2018 Town Road District budget? The motion is in order. You moved to it. Article one. Tom Coughlin. Second by the way. Discussion on Article one, Road District portion. Discussion, questions, comments?
Leave it on page twenty-six.
I feel, I want to just, Dan, do a shout-out. Can everyone hear me okay? Dan?
Now I'll try to speak a little softer. Anyways, we had incredible board improvements, you know, on town. And I know, and Joey mentioned that it had been from a grant. I know frequently that people who write grants for towns are often put a lot of their own time into it. I'm not sure that was the case, but I imagine it was. I want, I think it needs incredible things for that kind of drawing in extra funds to the town when that's available. As you can see, right on top of it, so I'm gonna change that. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions pertaining to Article one? Anything else? No, no further comments? Would the select board like to, uh...
I just wanted to make you aware, great printout that Joey has on the previous two pages kinda explains the budget. And there's just a couple of items on expenses of it. Now, new, it's a tiny expense. We're in the process of trying to get a salt shed. And we have to have lots of funds, so I, and a few lines above that is municipal road general program. And that's something that's gonna be annual now due to the water quality law. We have to pay into it every year. And we were accepted for the grant for the salt shed. It's just in early stages right now. We'll have some engineering costs this year, and then we'll log. Next, probably a two to three-year process to get down, or probably engineering to get it built.
Yes, Dan.
Billy, could you just talk for a moment about the availability of those nine-eleven signs? There's a blank form in the book about that.
It's here.
But Robert does make them up as, as orders.
This, this is, that was more or less...
Oh, that's part of the emergency service.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'll speak to him.
Any other questions, comments pertaining to Article one?
I would just like to say that I appreciate the clarity of your report. Really helps me wrap my head around your project. And having said that, questioning every year why we pay for a Road District separately when the village drives in the town, or is it, and we just town people drive on the little roads? I just wonder if the way we could combine them, like, look at combining them, again, for this is ongoing issue. That's my comment.
Yeah, that's, we were able to combine and develop a new board, took several years to do that. There's definitely would be some issues putting two Road Districts together. It would save overall if we make one, but I don't know how that's the kind of word. Definitely, probably be the next step in any merger that we're taking on in the village.
Any further questions or comments pertaining to Article one? Hearing none as many as would accept Article one of the Road District portion of meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. It's unanimous. Article two. To transact any other non-binding business, thought proper when met. Questions or comments?
I think I'd just like to add, part of the budget, we just approved paving. We're starting to get in more funds through the current news program. And we were able to put quite substantially on the way, the salary for paving. And maybe next year, we're gonna be looking at paving a few, couple miles maybe of our own roads. It's also something that is gonna be a requirement through the state, trying to get some of these dirt roads paved in certain locations that are gonna be key to the traffic. And it would save some expenses, like the Duffy Hill Road there, that's a steep hill that goes up through. We get pavement all around it. It won't take too much to finish out now. That's kind of the goal, setting a fund aside, try to get a couple miles done. Hopefully, next year, maybe we put a target.
Any comments? Question? No one? Catherine?
John Dewall. I just have one comment. I live on Duffy Hill. And, you know, things have certainly changed in a big way the past number of years. You know, we lost our last farming farm up the road. Eight years old, and now we've got more, they call it farm traffic, up and down our road than we've ever had in the past. To my way of thinking, it's more like industrial traffic compared with agriculture. They call it that. Year-round, they, people wouldn't craft out of their roads by a different set of rules. Just an observation of how things have changed, and even with the old definitions. Everyone should be able to see that it's not the same as it was. The impact on the town roads certainly reflects that.
That's true. Rachel?
I want to thank all the highway employees for all their great work. We, we really appreciate it, what we're out there traveling, and what we see other towns, when we're traveling through other towns. If you haven't, our town is awesome.
The chair seconds that motion. Any further questions or comments on Article two? Non-binding business this time? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to return. Oh, actually, okay. Recession. Well, that, that's Australian ballot. So, well, then, then we will enter, then we will just recess.
Thank you all for coming to support town.
Thank you for, thank you for your actual advocacy.